Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Rutland Town Select Board meeting for June 6th. This is Tuesday. We're here at 6 o'clock. We have with us today, Select Board Member Matt Getty, Select Board Member Kurt Hathaway, I'm Mary Ashcroft. Sharon Russell is under the weather and not attending, and it looks like Joe Donardo is also not attending. He's not, he sometimes Zooms in, but he isn't. We'll let you know if he joins us. So let's start with Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda, oh, just, yeah, first item on the agenda is the approval of the May 22nd Select Board Minutes.
Motioned.
Motion's been made to approve.
Second.
And seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will vote aye. And it is passed by the three of us. Okay. Are there any board member announcements?
All right, no, but do we need to vote on? The
Do we have another set?
Oh, hold on. Never mind. 22nd was United's special meeting, right?
Well, no, you're right. We also have a special Select Board Committee meeting for Tuesday, May 30th, and this was the Public Safety Building Committee, which is our committee meeting as a whole, so I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motioned.
Motion's made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Board member, yeah, I have board member announcements. There are none. Update from Select Board Chair. I've made a couple. Just, we do have a 6:15 call in, and that's on our Service Road project. We, okay, good. We have a 7 o'clock hearing on the vicious dog complaint. We have 7:00, 7:30 call in with our town attorney that will, excuse me, be executive session. So we're gonna try and meet all of those deadlines, okay? All right, and Sharon did go to MSJ and awarded the scholarship to a student at that institution. So, and when is Rutland High?
14.
Okay. All right, are there any questions from the floor or public comments from folks who are not otherwise on the agenda? There's only three people in the room besides the Select Board and our administrator, so I would say no. And it doesn't appear that there's anyone on the Zoom call. All right, let's see if we can get to Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Uh, real quick, baseball's kind of wrapping up in the next couple of weeks. Um, the grass is growing at Northwood and at Dewey, so that's good. I'm gonna fertilize, probably throw 10, 10, 10 at it, so I don't kill it, but I'm gonna pick some up and do that in the next week or two. Um, the pool signups for tonight, I'm gonna head back there after this. So far, we had about 35 people sign up, which is great. That's about average, which is good, and that'll continue tomorrow. We opened last weekend. We had two people swim. I don't know why they did. They did. Uh, so everything's running very smoothly in that regard.
Okay.
Just waiting for school to end, so I can live there for the summer. We're good. I don't really have anything else.
Any questions from Select Board members? Nope.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Quick and easy.
Yeah.
I like it.
Dude, did I forget something? No.
Um, so
You better live up to it.
Dave Sears, you're gonna be on with Evan anyway, and Ed Dumas, I think I'd like you in on the executive session with our attorney. Um, it's nothing bad you've done, so you know, okay. All right, um, so
I'm not aware of it.
Dave.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, you wanna just start with Evan, so he doesn't have to suffer through the
I'm sure he's enjoying it, not suffering in the least, so.
Not so far.
Okay. So, welcome and thank you for joining us.
Sure.
Now, I'm not even sure how long ago it was that you, you and your firm were working on the Service Road, and you were doing the preliminary studies that were going to be aiming us toward a oh, and I think a plan to go out to bid, or almost at that point. Why don't you refresh where we were? We have some new Select Board members since that time, and we decided to take another look at this. We know there's some federal funding that may be coming, um, and we wanted to see if it was feasible to put together, pick up where we were, how much it would cost to complete what you were working on, and next step, so.
Okay, yeah, sure. So, I was working with you about five years ago in 2018.
Wow.
And we were working on what was called the New Town Road project, so it would be a new town road um, that would pick up basically behind the Hannafords at Feral Distributing, um, and then make a connection going north from the Feral Distributing area. It would go north behind the properties out there and cross over Ranbury Road, and then go over to the Aldies. That was basically the alignment of the new road, and we had plans that we had developed at that time that showed the conceptual alignment of that road. We had done, um, some early planning for that and some field investigations, uh, and we were working towards getting together a set of preliminary engineering design plans when we were asked, asked to stop by the town to stop working on the project, because it was, it was unclear that the town had the motivation or money to continue with that project to complete it the way it had been, uh, thought about being completed. Um, so there was, uh, about $30,000 left in our budget at that point to complete the, just the preliminary engineering. And that's, that's what we were under contract for with the town at that time, just through preliminary plans. And there was some money left at that time to get us to the preliminary plan stage. Subsequent to the doing the preliminary plans, the goal for the town was to continue along with the design and the permitting and the right-of-way acquisition and some utility work uh, in order to bring the project forward to the point where we could get it out to bid for a construction contract. Right? This is an area that has, um, existing Act 250 permits on adjacent properties. There are operational stormwater permits on adjacent properties. Um, there's a small stream corridor. There are wetlands. There are known contaminated soils. So there are a lot of permitting tasks that would have to be undertaken in order to get all the approvals that you would need to build this road as well. Um, additionally, there were impacts to about eight private properties. So the town would need to acquire some sort of easement or, uh, acquire property in fee from property owners in order to have this new road go through the alignment I'm talking about. And then there was the question of the utilities. The project would directly impact, I think it was maybe two or three utility poles that would have to get relocated. Uh, but additionally, there was a bunch of discussion at that time in 2018 about whether or not we wanted to, um, put in potable water main, so public water supply down Ranbury Road primarily. Um, and also do something about the sewer that's out there as well. So there were a couple of things, um, that we had to, had to decide on for the road before we could ever move to final design, and that's why we were going through the preliminaries um, and taking a look at that. So the town was much better informed when it came to deciding whether or not you wanted to go forward with the final design. Um, uh, get those, uh, some more information in place before you could make a informed decision. And those things were really, you know, the level of permitting, um, what was gonna happen with contaminated soils. Should we or should we not include any of the water and sewer work? How amenable might the property owners be to having their, giving up some of their property for this new road? And that sort of thing. Um, we also looked at whether or not we could minimize the cost by doing things like not rebuilding, uh, Ranbury Road west of the project area, so where the new road would cross, which is about halfway along the length of Ranbury. Um, maybe not reconstruct the western half, uh, not reconstruct the existing uh, road up to Feral Drive, and just leave that the way it is basically without reconstructing, uh, with new pavement. Um, and did we want to do anything with signals out on Route 7? Um, and involve V-Trans in a more significant way? Or, you know, how did we want to proceed with the project? So should we have a, the full project that was first envisioned, which included a lot of these things I'm talking about, that eventually got excluded, or should we go with a more or less abbreviated project that might be more affordable, but maybe not quite as robust as was originally thought about? So we put pencils down in, um, 2019, I think it was, and we just have, uh, more or less been waiting since that time for the direction from the town. Um, and now it's really up to you folks about whether or not you want to have us continue to do the work and what that project, uh, you know, what you want to get out of that project in term of the, in terms of, um, these couple of things I talked about were maybe options or maybe part of a scaled-back project or not included in a scaled-back project.
Okay. Um, we have constructed the water line down Ranbury Road, so that's done.
We did do that.
Yeah. Um, and there's now a harbor freight in back of the Aldies, so there is another, um, property that's been developed.
Oh.
Yeah.
On that skinny parcel behind Aldies?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so a couple of, couple of updates from our side. I guess what we're looking for, um, the Select Board Member who really, and I'm the other one, um, really wanted to proceed with you folks back five years ago, um, is not here tonight, which is too, is he?
No.
Okay. Um, which is too bad, because he may have questions, but the real question is picking up now and having you finish the preliminary engineering work, what would it cost us to have you pick up those pencils again and, and finish the first part of what you were doing?
Yeah, I'd have to take a look at that. You know, we had about $30,000 left before. It would be somewhere in that neighborhood, but probably a bit north of that, so it may be closer to $40,000 at this point.
Okay.
But, but I'd have to really, you know, sit down and refresh my memory of where we left off and, and what we said we would do for that initial contract.
Okay. And I guess now it's, you know, the, up to the Select Board Members who weren't involved in this discussion, who are here tonight to pepper you with questions. Go do it.
Okay.
And just real quick, that $30,000 is actually in my budget for FY '24, so that
Yeah.
Yes.
There is some there.
We put money in there.
We did, with the thought that we would want to pick this up and proceed forward. So in one sense, we've already committed at least to moving along because we put some money in the budget. So, Matt?
I don't know, but I have questions now. I think, um, would be useful is a refresher from, from you and Joe about what the thinking was behind the project, but I mean, I think generally speaking, I'm gonna lean in favor of spending money to have this study in our pocket, so that we don't have, you know, sort of wasted work on the table, and we could be potentially completing the project in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, I can go over with it at some point, too. I was pretty familiar with the project. Was quite disappointed that it got stopped.
One of the things that we had looked at and we let drop because we were working on this was a um, a slip lane to allow trucks to access Feral Distributing more easily. And we went so far as to get a, uh, transportation board permit, which we have since let lapse, because it was probably not the best option. This was a better option, um, for the whole thing, so. Um, anyway, if you, so if you could, um, let us know what the cost might be and some timeline, how, how long would it take to um, put together those things? And then get back to, if you're willing to, and it probably was not the best political move ever by a Select Board to just drop things in the middle, but if you're still willing to work with us, we'd be grateful. And I think that would be the logical.
Yeah, you know, towns all the time reevaluate their priorities and what they're working on and that sort of thing, so this is nothing really unusual. So, um, no harm, no foul, as far as we're concerned. We'd be happy to continue along with this and help you out. I think by the end of this week, I could get back to you with a firm number to complete the preliminary engineering and then a schedule to do so.
That would be wonderful. Um, then we could take a look at it. We meet every two weeks, so we're not gonna be meeting again until the end of the month. Um, but, so you, in other words, don't rush. Um, but we would like to have something from you by the time of our next meeting.
Yeah, that won't be a problem. Um, I could, I could easily do that. So, um, yeah, I'll write up a, uh, I, I guess I'll just, at this point, I'll just write up a, a more or less formal summary in an email and say, this is, this is what I expect to complete, and then if you want to engage us to do that, we would just have to kind of refresh that contract.
Okay. All right, and I think Bill has the old, you had some pretty nice schedules on the, as I remember on the, the contract, that kind of outlined what, what was going to happen when, and so that was really helpful, so I've
Got files.
Okay, Bill's got the files, so he'll pull those out for us. Good. Well, thank you very much. Um, it's, it'll be good working with you again, and let's see how far we get this time.
Yeah. Okay, I'll be back in touch, and then we can, uh, pick it up from there.
Thank you, Evan, very much.
Thank you, Evan.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, back to the day-to-day.
Thanks for pulling that together, whoever did, so.
No problem.
Yeah.
Couple of phone calls and an email.
Okay.
Easy enough.
Good, thank you.
Sure. So in the last couple of weeks, um, there was a pretty large fill pile, um, over the backside of the transfer station, and we kind of ran that through the screen a little bit. Just to screen out, there's some, there was some nice nuggets in there. Um, but we need a room for the wrap for when the, the recycled asphalt product for when we do East Pittsburgh Road. We needed someplace to put that stuff, because that stuff is like gold, and I'm not giving it up, so um, we didn't really have any room, so we got room now.
Okay. Where's it going? On top or down below?
Down below.
Okay.
Down in the back. Um, so uh, in, kind of in line with that, the plan to mill East Pittsburgh Road could very possibly happen next week. Um, the, the mill machine is in, like Burlington on Monday, Middlebury on Tuesday, and if the wheels don't come off, it could be there Wednesday or Thursday. Possibly Friday, depends, but hopefully sometime next week, East Pittsburgh Road gets, we get started on that.
Hey.
And then, uh, additionally, the schedule for the reclaim of Travis Terrace will be the following week. So we got some destruction coming down the road. Um, last week, uh, Jason and Ben went to Middlebury, uh, all three days for chainsaw training, which was desperately needed, and they learned some stuff that neither of them knew, and I couldn't teach them, because was afraid to be around them. And I took some much-needed time off last week, so I wasn't around much. And on a bright note, Walt is back.
Yeah, when's he gonna start mowing?
Today.
Okay.
Yeah, he's out there today. Um, he was all smiles. Asked him if he wanted to come back full-time, and he immediately said no.
That smile went away.
No, he smiled when he said no. Um, uh, I finally got a bill from Fuller. I had to actually ask him for it, for Town Line Road, because he forgot to send us a bill. And I needed to get the grant, I need to get him paid for out of this year. So I kind of stepped on my foot by asking him for a bill that we might not have gotten in the first place, but we would have got it. He said, yeah, I would have run about a month or so, I'd have figured, how come I don't have any money? Yeah, okay. So, um, I'm working on putting that grant together. I'm waiting for one more invoice from, uh, Wilk on some rap that we bought from them for edging, and I'll be able to put that together. Um, right now, without that invoice, we're at $230,289 on that project, and I'm still waiting for that invoice, which should be a sizable number, so, um, we were, the, the cap on the project was 240.
Yeah.
So we're just, you know, 10 grand shy of that, and the closer we get to that, the closer we get to that 200. We got a, we get a max of 200 back if we get to 240, so.
Okay. All right, we kind of were. Yeah. All right, and this all should happen now, okay, in this fiscal year?
Uh, well, I doubt we'll get the money back, but I'll, I'll have the grant in by the end of
And you got carryover rights.
We got carryover.
Okay.
So, Bill and I did some calculations the other day, and we'll, it, it works. We'll be all good.
Okay, good.
Um, kind of in line with that also is we had the, uh, we applied for the grant for East Pittsburgh Road for the Class 2 paving grant, and we were, uh, not funded this year. I think, I think maybe, I don't, who knows? But, uh, when we were in here doing the grant for the, the culvert, we talked to him, to Brian, about, you know, possibly doing another grant for this year. He's like, well, we kind of given a lot of money to the town, and I don't know, so.
All right.
You know, and then I did get us on the list for that thing on Stratton Road. So they may be looking at uh, ease up a little bit.
Okay.
So, that, but that's fine with, with all of this, the way it sugars off, we're still good to do everything we're gonna do anyway, so it's fine.
Okay, good.
And, uh, this afternoon, because we had a little bit of time, we are building a compost bin for a big giant compost pile, and we built the back wall today, so.
Good.
I gotta get some more blocks to build some sidewalls, and we'll start.
Where's it gonna, where's it going?
Down over the bank.
Down over the bank, okay. Who's gonna be in charge of it? Highway or?
Yeah.
Transfer?
It'll be us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, 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 good.
Yeah. And that's where we are.
Okay, questions of our road commissioner?
Any luck hiring anybody?
Got an interview tomorrow morning at 6:15. Chances are pretty good for him at this point.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I guess maybe just one other thing. I talked to Kurt a couple of weeks ago.
Um, This Kurt?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um,
Yeah.
There's a, a homeowner on, um, Gloria Drive who has a drainage system going across his property, but it's, I guess, I don't really know. I, that's why I want to talk to Joe or Kurt, because there's a history here. This was all done, obviously, long before I got here, but it is a culvert that comes across the road that's 15 inches, and then it comes out of the culvert, and it's just, and then it's six, a six-inch pipe running about 120 feet or so, and it goes back into an 15-inch culvert across a little driveway, comes out of there and goes down to four inch for the last, it's like 320 feet total. And, believe it or not, it doesn't work.
Can't think why not?
I don't know. It's, it's crazy. So, um, he's been on me since the day I walked through the door about fixing this, and it's kind of out of the right of way, but the town allegedly did it. So, um, at some point, you know, Kurt thought it was fine to fix this the right way, and so it'll be sometime later in the summer, and he, the guys are fine with that, but just is what it is.
Yeah, do we have easements?
I can get one. He'll give, he'll sign, he'll sign his property over.
Okay, I think, I mean, that, going forward, we're learning, we've learned so many lessons in the past. Let's make sure we have an easement and
Yeah.
um, temporary construction easement, and then the, the permanent easement for
Right.
this thing. If we're gonna invest the money in it, we want to secure
Yep.
our ability to go in and fix it, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Do you need to talk to, well, Kevin's gonna be on later, but he's got another
This is kind of down the road, so I'll, I'll talk to him, and I'll we'll figure it all out.
Okay, good, thank you.
This will be, you know, late, late summer project, probably.
Okay. Matt, questions?
Think these, think we're good?
All right, good. Thank you very much. All right. Hi. Marsha Chaffee, is she on? Okay. Um, yes, and Chris Clark is not participating. And that also means Kerry Clark is not.
Yeah.
Um, Mike Delahanty? All right. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Okay, this is rapid discussion.
Well, don't do that, because you know how I jinx things, so.
People be back later.
I understand.
Yeah.
So, last two weeks called for service, 62 calls for service. We had 14 traffic stops.
Ooh. Yes, yes, it was great fun watching our second constable down on Creek Road. And the cars just nicely slowing and enjoying the scenery is great.
And the other thing was, uh, the stats for May, uh, Lynn got those done. Let's see, so we had a total of 159 cases for the month. 109 were at the south end of the town the last month, so we're still up quite a bit, actually. Last month was kind of an anomaly. We had 75 incidents in the south end. And, uh, January, we're at 71. There we go. It's getting warm. Things are starting to pick up. I know the city's really busy with retail thefts with a group of probably four or five people that are just doing that over and over and over again. And then we did get, I did get a call from, uh, somebody in the DSP world. We talked about, uh, the, uh, the eviction process of, um, and how, what they weren't gonna do and what we're not gonna do, I guess.
Okay. Because we may have a discussion with town attorney about that.
Okay.
We will, later.
Yes. Before I say too much, yeah, we, I I think we're on the same page.
Okay, I think we are.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's all I have at this point in time.
Questions of our police chief?
Um, so there's been an uptick in Swift tractor trailers coming across Metal Lake Drive, down East Pittsburgh Road, up over Prospect Hill. I know if you could maybe reach out to DMV and see if they wanted to maybe sit on that a little bit, or, you know, JP wanted to sit on that.
All right, I'll talk to
It was like three, four, five trucks a week.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, and they're all swift, every single one of them.
Taking a shortcut?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Are they overweight?
Oh, they're full semis.
Okay.
Yeah. I avoid empty going down the road.
Yeah, oh, they are, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're 30-something thousand pounds empty.
Metal Lake Drive?
I assume that they're coming over Metal Lake Drive, down East Pittsburgh Road, and then up over Prospect Hill by the farm.
Yeah.
Got the road in big shop.
Yeah, it is.
Have you seen by the farm? Go down by the farm?
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, they come right up the hill by the farm, around the corner, yeah. Yep, I'm probably gonna shoot myself in the foot by having DM, DOT go up there, and I'm gonna be in my truck, and then they're gonna stop me, but, you know, whatever.
Okay.
Okay, Matt?
Nothing, right.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, John Paul Fagnant, is he on? Barbara Noyes pulling. Yay.
Yay, yeah, the order went much quicker than I
Yes, indeed.
looked. Yeah, so, yeah, good to be back. Um, so the Planning Commission has pretty much wrapped up its work on the short-term rentals ordinance. Um, and we did that last Thursday. Um, that was three weeks after we had the public informational meeting on May 11th. And, let's see, uh, 22 And let's see, uh, twenty two people attended that, twenty uh, were residents. Um, seven spoke against, um, one person spoke in favor of the draft ordinance, but. Um, they, they tried to speak over her at one point. Um, but the complaints ranged from that it was an undue financial burden. Um, to it being too close to zoning. And um, so we didn't do anything that night, the planning commission, we sat on it for three weeks. And then met again um, last Thursday night and talked about our options. We talked about maybe setting up a committee, we talked about doing uh, perhaps an automatic review of the ordinance in a year's time. Um, but then um, we voted on passing it uh, with a few changes. We uh, reduced the fees in half for registering, um, they were a hundred dollars. Um, to, to fill out the permit and a hundred dollars per bedroom, so we reduced that to fifteen fifty. On Kevin Brown's um, recommendation, we uh, eliminated the waivers section and the waivers fees. And um, we did a few other changes that we'd asked Kevin for help on. So then um, then a motion was made to pass it um, with those changes. And the vote went seven to zero in favor of passing it. Uh, it would have gone, I think, nine to zero if the alternates could have voted that night. Um, so there was um, you know, after working on this for a few months. Um, and you know, hearing, hearing the public and trying to address those concerns. Um, they're ready to pass it along to you. Uh, being that it was last Thursday night, we didn't have time to get it into your packet, so we can take a closer look at it. Uh, in, at your meeting in two weeks' time.
Okay, so we have something on our desk that says final draft, uh, short term rental ordinance. Version date six one twenty three, is that the one you passed?
Yes, that should be the one.
Okay, um, so, yeah, and we're down to select board members, so we really. Shouldn't do anything tonight. What's the process for us now? You've sent the recommended ordinance to us, what do we have to do? Now, is there a public hearing is kind of what I was wondering?
Well, for an ordinance, I don't think there is one required.
Okay.
Uh, for, for the select board, I mean, the planning commission opted to have one. Um, I think in the past, you've been, you have passed uh, ordinances. Uh, you know, right there on the spot sometimes.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken. So, yeah, yeah, I mean, the bottom line is that the planning commission um, is, is very concerned about. Of the growth of short term rentals in, in town, the potential growth uh, and the health and safety effects. Um, that could come with that. And uh, you know, we, there were a couple of people from out of town at our public meeting. Uh, one woman from Burlington um, was there to share some lessons that they learned up in Burlington. Which is probably a different animal altogether, what, you know, what they passed. Um, but it took them three years and she was just cautioning that um. Uh, that, you know, we need to work people in, which we think we did with, with the public meeting. Um, there was another person listening in um, from Polit. And in that town, um, the fire chief. Um, has asked that town's planning commission to look into a short term rentals ordinance, um, so that there is. A parity, you know, so that all lodging establishments in town have the same requirements. With sprinklers and fire doors and, and the like. So uh, that, that particular person is going to several different meetings um, that, with other towns that are considering. Um, an ordinance. And then she's over the Memorial Day weekend, I was approached from, by someone from Shrewsbury. And they estimate they have sixty short term rentals um, going uh, in any given time. And um, they're, they're a little bit concerned, um, they haven't quite gotten to the point of looking at an ordinance or a bylaw, they have zoning. Um, but they're concerned about the effects it's having on the character of their town and it's just. Um, you know, some weekends, there's just a lot more people than they're used to, um, and there's, you know, they're even like. Trespassing on farmland and uh, that sort of thing, so the concern is out there. Um, there are about maybe twenty towns that have either passed an ordinance. Or are looking at it, maybe a little bit more now, um. And um, so, you know, we're, we're not at the head of the pack there, or not, we're not, you know, we're not an outlier. Uh, in that sense, um, we're in with a group of towns that are um. Start taking a look at this and trying to be preemptive, I guess. And uh, Kevin Brown has already done one for Killington and he helped us uh, with the one we have.
Alright, questions of Barbara? Matt?
So uh, Barbara, is this, this final draft, is, are there any significant changes in this other than the ones you mentioned regarding the fees?
No, um, Bill might know better than I, there's some definitions that were missing um, that I didn't mention. Um. I don't think there's much else, and we updated, so we put that on the website and we updated the frequently asked questions. Um, so that the new fees are reflected in that. Uh. Yeah, yeah, Kevin, Kevin just told us like the waivers, you know, don't, don't even go there, don't, don't offer waivers. Um, and, and um, he didn't have a comment on the registration fees. That was the planning commission's idea to reduce those.
So, at the public meeting, um, I'm. Guess I would assume, but probably shouldn't, the, the, all the folks that showed up, were they? All people who own short term rentals or operating short term rentals that are speaking against it, were they just folks who were against it on philosophical grounds?
Um, yeah, a little bit of both, that seemed like um, the hosts that were there were a pretty unified uh, group against the ordinance. And then there were those who saw it as zoning. Um, then there was like maybe a third of the group were just people who came to listen to what was being said.
And then uh, you said there were one or two people that spoke in favor of it, were they operators? Or are they folks who were negatively impacted by rentals near them, or what was their?
Uh, there was, there was the, the one that we got a letter from, um, from Hitzel Terrace. Uh, I believe there's one short term rental up there now.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, and then Fred Nicholson was there and um. His comment, I guess, I don't know, fits, it doesn't quite fit into the other categories, it was, uh, this is a solution in search of a problem. Was. Was his comment, but uh, again, that's not how the planning commission decided to. To, uh, you know, come down on this and, you know, finish our work on this.
Have there been, has the commission had any conversations with? Hosts uh, other than those that came to the public meeting?
No, no, we thought that would be our opportunity. And um, even during the, the public meeting, I, I offered the idea of setting up a committee. And having hosts help us uh, with an ordinance. Um, I had to ask several times or twice to um, get a volunteer and I got. Um, one former host and I think one current host. But they weren't really jazzed about uh, doing this.
Well, I guess, I hope they, it's unlikely that they're gonna ever hear this comment, but. People ought to know, you know, it's hard to do our jobs if they don't provide us feedback, so. I for one would be interested in hearing from the hosts, so if they haven't spoken to the commission. I hope they reach out and contact the board and give us feedback, cause we have to make a decision. And we have to make a decision based on the information that's given to us, and so, you know. We can only guess about silence, we can't necessarily assume that the folks that showed up are representative sample. When they spoke against it, they, you know, nine people are not a majority of the hosts in town either, I mean, uh. One might guess the rest are in favor, I'm guessing they're not, but we don't know, so I'd love to hear from them because um. I just feel like I'm concerned that we might make a decision based on assumptions or. What we're hearing from other towns that we're not necessarily, you know, about, about problems that we're not necessarily experiencing yet in rural town. That certainly are concerns, are concerns that I would have and would want to monitor, but at this point, I'm just not hearing. That, you know, those things have become issues in the town yet, but I'm certainly open to hearing if they are.
Yeah, and from the planning commission's uh, viewpoint. Um, we see that, you know, this is a pretty simple ordinance at this point. And it's basically a registration process. Uh, there is a state fire safety inspection involved, but it's basically uh, data for the town. To start collecting and to collect, um, you know, ongoing. And um, you know, and you know, we use that to um, just. To try to stay on top of this if it becomes a potential problem, or just to, to give us some, some information of what is going on out there. Otherwise, otherwise, we, we just, you know, we, we, there's, there's three or more platforms, services. Online services that people are using, so you just, you just, you know, do what you can, uh. You know, the, the only way you can keep track of what's going on is to go online and see what's being advertised.
Right, well, or if, you know, if there are folks out there in neighborhoods, like, you know, we've, we've had a comment about Hitzel Terrace. If there are other situations like that, that people want to comment on. That would certainly have an impact on me and how I think about it, I mean, if there. A lot of these units that are having a negative impact on their neighborhoods or something like that, then we would need, need to know, but. People aren't gonna come to the meeting or contact the board, then, then we don't know, so. Make a decision just to do something just based on, on one incident.
Oh, one incident, I'm sorry?
They sent a one, one case that we've heard about of.
Okay. What, what I was gonna add is that I think there's um. You know, I, I was concerned um, by some of the reaction to the publicity, to the public meeting, that. There might be some intimidation, there was a little bit at the meeting toward the one person who was, came. To speak for the ordinance and for her neighborhood. So um, I'm not sure those, those people um, think they might get a fair shake. Um, because the uh, the, the opposition was loud. And, and a little bit forceful.
Yeah, well, like I said, you can't necessarily assume based on this.
Forceful that I heard, maybe my definition of force was different than hers, but it was a very open meeting, that people were a little heated maybe. About the town, telling them what they could do with their property, that was the main concern I heard, uh, but. I don't think she's giving you a fair shake of what happened in that room, I was asked to attend it, I didn't have to tell anybody to be quiet or anything like that. They all voiced their concern, they didn't want the town to tell them what to do with their property, they brought up the fact that there was a. We voted many years ago that we didn't want zoning and this looks like zoning to them, that's, that's an opinion they make.
No.
I'm sorry, I, someday I might wanna have a Airbnb and I don't want the town to tell me what I can and can't do with my own property, that's the problem with zoning.
We, we actually voted in favor of zoning, it wa, it was a poll. That we did, I, it was before I was on the board, but I do remember it and basically people said, yeah, you know, we'd like some kind of zoning. Um, so it wasn't, whatever the comment was about people voting against zoning, that. That, to my recollection, didn't occur, but that was a long time ago.
But I was there and I heard.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
My, what I saw was different than what.
The Hitzel Terrace complaint was about water usage, because they have a fire district.
Okay.
Honestly, Airbnb is probably gonna use less water than regular house, cause you're not doing laundry a lot of the times, so.
It depends on how people use it and how it's, I mean, you. You know, if you overpack a, a place with, with people that are, you know, flushing the toilets nonstop and whatnot, I imagine it's gonna have.
Yeah.
A lot of use, but um.
Terms of water usage with a water district, that's something they can take care of as a fire district.
When they also have covenants in the neighborhood that addresses, so it is also a private cause of action, which I realize is not a great. Uh, solution for them to have to fall back on, but that's sort of reality, anyways. I guess my, my point is the more feedback that we get, the better, if there are more people out there that are in favor of it, I'd like to hear from them. Um.
Well, let me ask, would, I mean, we're not gonna do anything tonight. Um, do you wanna set up a, a hearing of our own?
Well, Bill had his hand raised earlier down process, could you comment on that?
Yes, uh, it is, if this was a bylaw, which the subdivision regulations are a bylaw. Those do require us uh, a planning commission and a select board hearing before adoption. Ordinances do not, you could actually vote to adopt this tonight and then it, it starts the process, uh, but. There were some other, and I, I actually made, made some notes for, when I, when I talk about this too, but. Um, the, the process for an ordinance options, you just vote on it, and then that's, that's, that starts it, that starts its process, there's a defined. Um. Process for, for ordinances.
And there's what, thirty days within which people can, sixty days, and your, people can petition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's kind of backwards from the, the ordinance bylaw.
So, I guess I would think maybe we just put it on a future agenda, we get the word out by various means, social media. Uh, run porch forum, whatnot, to people that we're gonna be voting on it, please, if you have comments, send them to. To a board member or to Bill, or we can pass them on and, you know. People weigh in in the comments of Facebook certainly.
Yeah.
It'd be nice, you know, send a, a formal email or, or a letter or something like that, and maybe you'll get the same people commenting. But if there are more people that are in favor of it or are having problems with uh, short term rentals, but weren't able to get to the meeting, then. It'd be nice if they had another opportunity to weigh in.
Timeline, yeah.
I wouldn't be opposed to a select board hearing either.
Okay.
The more we can hear from the public, the better.
Yeah, alright, um, so our next meeting is probably too soon. I mean, we could do, we could do like a five o'clock hearing, we've done that before, and then go into our select board meeting. At six.
Oh yeah, the fourth is on Tuesday.
Yeah, and that's, that's our.
Yep.
That's, so we can't, I mean, we gotta do something about meeting on the fourth unless you really want to.
Negative.
So two weeks or. The meeting after that, whenever we decide to do it, what's your pleasure?
Eighteenth, I don't know, I don't even know if I'm around.
If you want the public to show up having it around the fourth of July, you're probably not gonna have a whole lot of.
Yeah.
I think doing it at five o'clock is gonna be tough for people too.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and I'm just throwing out ideas, so we, in the past. Every once in a while, we have to do a public comment period for a grant that we've applied for and we've. We've set like seven o'clock in the middle of the select board meeting, we suspend the other business, we take it up then. This feels like it may be a little different than that.
Yeah, I think it might go.
Yeah.
Should we go the, should we go the twenty seventh and have a special meeting?
Twenty seventh of.
June. That gives you three weeks to get in.
No.
Is this an emergency? I mean, we could put it off all the way to August, couldn't we?
We could put it off as long as we wanted.
So do the eighteenth and then we've got plenty of time to get it out.
The eighteenth of.
July. I'm not needing.
I may not be at the meeting, I'm not sure.
The eighteenth, yeah, I wonder.
July is tough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or I I mean, I I like the five P M idea that does nice to give dedicated time for that. We're not satisfied with the outcome of that one. We can do another, do another one later.
Yeah, we could. Yeah.
There, there is a lot of people paying attention to what we're doing. So I I I think that if we said we're doing it at five P M twentieth, I think we would get that. Marcia said she got half a dozen phone calls today. People just asking where we are in the process, so. So it's, there there is interest out there. It's from 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 towns, from residents, from a variety of different people, so.
Yeah, so, but that's in just two weeks. What do you, which, select board members, what's your thought?
You can toss it up there and if we feel like the attendance is a little light, we'll schedule another one.
So you're suggesting a five o'clock select board meeting. On June twentieth. Hearing on this is kind of a special meeting.
I. And scheduling a hearing on that at five o'clock makes it tough for people that might be working till five o'clock. I don't mind. Just looking at my calendar, um, I don't mind. Starting the meeting at five o'clock. But I think we're gonna do a hearing as part of it. I would push it back to a little bit later. Some people can get here.
Fair enough.
So, well. How about we do? Say five thirty on the twentieth. And then. We can maybe start our select board meeting a little later at six thirty.
Or or whenever, well, I guess you have to set it.
Yeah. Yeah, and there, there's some benefit to that. People do tend to tailor their remarks a little bit better if.
Do we try to start a select board meeting early and then recess at seven, try to blow through it? As much of the board meeting as we can.
An open ended public hearing.
Well, I don't have to.
Yeah.
I mean.
Fair, I guess.
Kind of up to you to moderate that, I guess, or is it up to me? I don't know. Um, I think if we could start at five and we can burn through a bunch of our agenda, that might be good.
Yeah, if we start the meeting at five and see how much we can burn through.
So.
And then.
Five P M select board meeting, six P M, we recess the ordinary business and we go into the public hearing.
And if a whole bunch of people show up, you just set a time limit on your comment. You got two minutes to speak and.
We do six or seven?
Um, on the off chance that we would be ready to adjourn, I would say we do six. And then we can come back and finish anything that we need to. Then then we say, and we limit it to. No later than seven. And then come back at seven. To finish the select board meeting.
Fair.
Okay, wait until the other two hear about what you guys.
Man, that's what happens. You know, show up.
Um, okay, so sp- a select board meeting on. June twentieth will begin at five with our regular business. It will um go into the public. Hearing, public comment portion of the short term ordinance review at six o'clock. And then resume no later than seven o'clock for the rest of our business, um, if needed. Okay, right, you guys good with that? I don't think we need a motion on that. We'll just do it.
Do it.
I'll blame you too.
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Been blamed for worse.
Yes, you have, so have I. Okay, um, Barbara, anything else?
Um, yeah, maybe just uh uh to mention that uh. The people that join on Zoom, if if the people are testifying or whatever you want to call it. Are are talking about the ordinance, uh, they need to be near one of the mics. There's one near Kurt and um. There's a, there's a couple over on the other side, I guess, that's usually vacant. So uh, if 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 they're not at the mics, the people on Zoom cannot hear what they're saying.
Okay, fair enough. Good, good to know. So we'll attempt to, we'll do some sound checks occasionally too. Okay. All right, anything else from the planning commission? Thank you very much for your work on this. I know it was um. Quite a chore, but we appreciate the, the work you put into it.
Sure, yeah, and if you need any other help, just let us know.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, um. We've got. Bills, sweet town administrator.
No.
We got a lot, well. Do we have anything else?
Yeah, we have, you could do the uh grant funds and we could do the town, the parcel bits.
Oh, well, let's hold, we've only got four minutes on, so. Let's do the grant funds. This is, oh, Barbara was on, so this is, she helped us get this. This is the M R P. Four thousand dollar grant. It's a none. We don't have to match it. Um, it is, and. The energy committee took a look at this, right? And we are using it for. Energy audits in a couple of town buildings. I think that's, is that correctly put, Barbara?
Um, that's, that, those are free um in the um, one of the upcoming phases of the M R P. Funding, so the the audits, you know, you'll have to apply for those, but they will be free. You'll have to select the buildings. Um, I, if I remember correctly, you were looking at uh maybe having consultant come in and look at the downstairs. There at the town office. And the the four thousand, this mini grant of four thousand dollars can be used for that. It can also be used for an ADA compliance consultant if you think there are any issues like that. Downstairs. Uh, and it can be used for a variety of things. The the number of things it can, you know, just keeps expanding. But that was, I I believe, some of the original conversations.
Yes, you're bringing it back to me. We have. Um, also brought in an architect to start working on the downstairs and. Given that, I'm not sure that this four thousand would be better directed downstairs or someplace else. And do we have other town buildings that need a look? I almost think we do.
The highway garage.
The highway garage was one, yeah.
So the 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 free audits. Um, they, they will uh result in a number of suggestions for things that can be done. To make the building more energy um resilient and uh, you know, reduce conservation or reduce energy costs. So it it that you may want to wait for the audit. For that. Um, kind of work of this mini grant. It it originally started as, as a, they call it a community capacity building grant. So uh, you know, the legislators who sponsor it were thinking that, you know, would go for direct mailings. Or, you know, stack cards or or consultants that would reach out to to residents. Um, energy fairs, things like that. Um. But you could also use it to train municipal staff on energy efficiency topics. Um. You can hire a consultant to set up um the construction project after the M R P audit. You can pay for a clerk of the works for that construction project. Uh, well, that that's actually with the construction money. So that.
But my understanding was we kind of needed to do this before we were in line for the free audits.
No, they're um, they're all pretty, the three phases are pretty separate. With the exception that you can't get construction money unless you you go through the audit, the M R P audit process.
Okay.
Uh, but there's applications, three different applications for each of those.
All right. So I guess my question is, if we got a four thousand dollar chunk of money. Are there projects around that we could use this money for educational purposes? Maybe a display, a townwide celebration, um. And we had talked some of those things when, when the energy committee met. So it, bottom line, can we think of enough uses for it that it wouldn't go to waste?
Yeah, y- you can, you've got two years to spend it down, the four thousand dollars. Um, so maybe the, maybe the energy committee um should put its heads together and. Come up with some uh new recommendations.
Okay. All right, so do we? I think we need a motion to accept this grant.
Move, we approve them. Accept the M R P grant and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, discussion. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries and. I just signed it. This one place? Okay, thank you. So. More thing to go after that. Um, we are at seven o'clock and that is the time we have set for the complaint of a vicious dog. This is a slightly different process. Um, this is a more formal hearing process that the select board has to do. So let's see who's here to speak of it, Mr. Acavelo. Okay, and do you have anybody besides you who are going, uh, who's going to speak about what has happened? Okay, um, Mr. Moran? Okay, and you're gonna speak. Do you have anyone else who's going to speak with you? Okay, very good, so, um. We're, we're going to follow the process as best we can in our ordinance. Um, and I did run a copy of it, I remembered that. So for the two folks who are. Going to testify, and it is a hearing, so I'm gonna ask you to um stand. Those two of you who are gonna testify, raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give and the matter now under consideration will be the truth, the whole truth? And nothing but the truth under pains and penalty of perjury.
I swear.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Acavelo, um, we'll start with you if you'd come up here, please. And tell us. Who you are, where you live, and something about the circumstances that brought you here.
All right. I, my name's Donald Acavelo. I live at one ninety-two Connor Drive, Rutland Town. What brings me here is I've had a problem with my next door neighbor's dog. He's attacked my dog four times. Two of the times he wasn't reported because I didn't want to be that kind of neighbor. So we let it go and they promised me over and over again it wouldn't happen again. And it, and it's happened four times and it's their dog getting off their run. And coming onto my property where my dog is. On a run, so he can't get away. And I've had vet bills and as you can see there. Uh, but my major. Problem is. My great granddaughter is outside sometimes and i- if this dog gets away and comes over to attack my dog. Lord knows what could happen.
Okay, and you had filed something with the select board, a one page statement. Remember?
Yes.
That into us.
Yeah.
Um. Is that? Is that your statement there? Ignore the B up at the top.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, and attached to it were two photos.
Yeah.
Okay, did you take those photos?
I did.
Um, and one is of.
This is, they didn't have a fence there during bite one and bite two.
Okay.
But they decided to put up a fence. And in a few weeks, a windstorm blew down two sections of the fence. And the third bite came, or the fourth bite, I think it is, came from their dog coming through there.
Through the fence, okay.
And this is only a fence on one side. This, this is not ending, just ends and there's no. I never heard of a fence.
Not an enclosure.
No, it's not. It's only one side.
Okay, and the second photo. Is.
The injury.
Okay, uh, it, the injury to your dog?
Yes.
Okay, did you take that picture?
Yes.
Approximately when?
I don't, I don't know the date.
Was it after the first bite, the second bite, the third bite, the fourth bite?
I think that was the third bite.
So are you asking us to consider this all as part of the evidence?
Yes.
Okay, um, did you get a chance to see these?
These are the pictures, but I got a chance to see the.
You saw the statement?
The statement.
So take a look at the pictures. I'm gonna ask you the same question. Do you have any objection to us using that information as part of the evidence?
No.
Okay, thank you, so. This is now. What's been labeled as B, it isn't really, but it's how we've identified the docket and our packet. There's three pages and those are now part of the evidence. So anything else we should know?
Yes, I, I'm not here to get the dog euthanized. I'm a dog lover myself. But I can't continue like this. It's just not fair to me. It's not fair to my family.
Okay.
Um. I don't know what the answer is.
Um, select board members, questions of Mr. Acavelo?
Sure, so. You provided a picture of one of the injuries. Uncertain which one it is, but sounds like it's not the first one. Would you, would you s-? Say, with from the other incidents, were there additional injuries and how would they compare to this?
Well, that's because you'll see the vet bills. You can see what the injuries are and. Also what the vet said.
I'm sorry, did we have a statement from the vet?
You didn't bring any statement.
I, I did.
Okay.
Yeah. This is an additional bill and the statement from one of the statements from the vet.
Let's see, so this is a settlement, hospital, and the date on this is. Says it was printed six, six, twenty-three. Dated eighteen. Eight twenty.
Eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. So this is one of the first time it happened?
It might be. I believe so, because that was Esther's writing, so.
Okay, so.
I only have.
Dog, it says, the, the general note is dogfight check left rear foot.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other is animal record. It's not labeled. Um, and notes as four twenty-six twenty-three about what the vet logged as. What he heard had happened and then some scribble notes. There is that as doctor.
Yeah, I couldn't read it myself.
Okay.
Every animal, instead of just one.
So do you want us to consider these as part of the evidence? All right, I'm gonna show. You have any objection to us considering these two? Okay, so we will admit the. Receipt from eight twenty eighteen. and the animal record from this is from Santa Roland as well, that um vet hospital? Okay. So there, there you go. And do you have? Do you have the pictures from before?
Okay.
Yeah, I got those.
So questions, and then we're gonna allow Mr. Moran to ask questions? And then you're gonna swap places, he gets a chance to talk, you get a chance to ask him questions, and we can do the same.
So do we think then you've determined that this was from the first incident?
The what?
This.
Twenty eighteen, yes.
Okay. And then the second document is this related to the same? What is this? Do we know? What is this document?
What the vet gave me.
Okay, so here I see a date, April twenty-sixth of twenty-three. So is that the most recent incident then?
I'm sorry, what was that date?
April twenty-sixth of this year.
Yeah, it looks like according to the timeline. April twenty-sixth was
And you should have a bill that coincides with that date.
Uh, all we have is what you just provided to us, I believe, and the written statement. And the pictures, that's all we have.
In your original packet. You must have invoices.
Not that were provided to us. Yeah. Do we have anything else now?
There's a letter in the picture.
Okay.
Hey. This appears to me to say that P, is that your dog, is that the initial for your dog's name?
No, his name is B, Bobby.
Oh, yep, could be a B. He's a little, so B was attacked by a pit bull. Um. So, oh, it looks like O just called, uh, right leg. Difficulty walking. Don't see any punctures or
Yes, that was the last one.
Or blood. Can't feel any something perhaps fracture. Uh. And the rest, I can't make out. And there's no charging.
Okay, I'm gonna pass this up. Any further questions, Matt?
Um. No, I guess not, I mean, I'm curious about what other invoices there may have been, but we do not have them.
Well, I have them if
Okay. Mr. Moran, questions of Mr. Acavelo?
Uh, one of the questions was, why would the vet think that we had a pit bull?
I never mentioned a pit bull, but it's not a pit bull, it sure looks like it, what is it?
The Sherpa lab.
Chairman, I wonder if we should have everyone in front of a mic in case our missing members desire to review the record later.
I can speak up too if that
I don't know if that will
Yeah.
You guys sit over there, how do you want, I don't
Uh, that one
Will Sharon get mad at me if I'm in her seat?
You could pull it, you could pull a chair.
On my back.
Why don't you pull that chair right up over there?
Okay, good.
Good?
Nah, it's good.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, so I mean, I it's, I I was just wondering where the pit bull part came from, cuz that no
I don't know, it says nothing in my stuff about a pit bull.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, this is
This dog.
Happened to be on this.
Yeah, that's interesting, um, this didn't make a lot of sense to me. Um, yeah, he's
It's a minor detail, though.
So what what happened with the bills? Who paid the bills?
I did.
Okay.
Which I'd like reimbursement for.
Okay. Um, I, we don't have them in front of us except for that one statement.
Well, this, this one's a bill for one forty-five
Yeah, that's the last one.
And this one looks like ni- one ninety? Maybe? Is what it looks like.
Yeah, uh, but I think if you look at the the one that's the actual bill, there are other things on
Yes, and and the other one is all by itself.
Yeah.
I don't think that bill's very big. Though the
This, this one looks like a one ninety in the bottom corner.
Yes, but what does it say above it, is there other things like medicine?
Yeah, there's yeah, there's something in the chicken scratch.
Yeah.
It looked like some of that was not related.
Right.
Just regular checkup stuff.
Yeah, I believe it was.
So like maybe the most you could figure out of this is like a fifty-five and a twenty-five?
So while the ordinance doesn't call, I don't think, for reimbursement of expenses, but it does allow the select board to um. We have to determine first whether the dog is a vicious dog or creating a nuisance. Um, or, you know, being off-leash or out of control, um, and then we can um, may issue an order for the protection of persons, domestic animals and or property as the facts and circumstances may require, including that the dog be muzzled, chained, confined, or disposed of in a in a humane way. Um, so do you have any requests that you wanna make of us as to what we should put in an order?
Like I said, I don't wanna see the dog euthanized, it's not why I'm here. But I wanna be protected, now however you can do that is fine with me.
Okay, um, with Kurt didn't have a chance to ask questions?
I'm I'm all set on questions right now.
I'm just scribbling that these are all part of the Okay, any more questions, Mr. Moran?
No, I just have a prepared statement.
Okay, so it it sounds like we're done with you, but you can sit right there because you're picked up on mic and we'll let you make your statement, Mr. Rand Moran from there.
Thank you, would you like me to stand or am I okay sitting?
No, you're fine.
Okay. Uh, good evening. Although I'm here under a set of unfortunate circumstances, uh, I'm glad to have the opportunity to address the select board and bring some clarity uh, to all the circumstances that surround the interactions between our dog Gordy Howe and our neighbor's dog Bobby, uh, who's owned by Mr. Acavelo.
Gordy Howe, huh?
Yes. Yes, unfortunately named after a hockey fighter. He did score a lot of goals and get a lot of assists, so simmer down. Uh, now, um. I have a timeline here that I'll hand to you guys, I have a packet for each uh, member of the select board, um, of the number of interactions that have occurred surrounding these circumstances, and I will attach them to some documents to give you. Um, as you can see, some things were left out, um, in key interactions between our pets, um. With the original statement you received, Mr. Acavelo, that I just wanna make sure we have the timeline correct. Uh, these interactions paint a picture that may show more of a back and forth between the two dogs that we both own. It is unfortunate that these two animals have a disdain for each other. I feel like Mr. Acavelo is kind of struggling to come to terms with his dog's responsibility in the relationship that the two dogs have. Behavior between the animals. All right, um. As you can see from the timeline, I'll hand that out to you in a moment, uh, both parties have been unfortunately responsible for negative interactions between their dogs. Due to our role in this, we have sought out a professional dog trainer. I will attach a letter from an animal behavior college certified dog trainer that speaks to the nature of our dog and the way in which Gordy weekly interacts with and plays in an open environment with many other dogs. Many other Rutland Town dogs. Um. I could provide you with videos of him playing with other dogs as evidence to this, if you like to see videos of dogs frolicking, let me know and I'll pass my phone around and you can check them right out. Uh, we've also tried to make the ability for our dogs to interact as limited as possible within our means. In doing so, we spent over $8,000 to put a tall fence between our yard. The tall fence runs all the way to the back, corners with another neighbor's fence and is on two sides, the space that he could possibly get through if he was to evade his chain, which has happened obviously in the past, is a very small space between the garage and the fence, other than that, they would have to go all the way around the house and pool. Unfortunately, $8,000 is a lot of money to us. Okay, so my love would be to put a gate on this side, fence out the other side, I would love to have a fenced-in yard, it'd be amazing. Nurse. Guidance counselor. $8,000 is a huge chunk of change. Okay, it's about, I don't know, seven months of my salary. Okay, so. Um, the most recent interaction between our dogs in which Mr. Mr. Acavelo was not home and his housekeeper hooked his dog up outside was in late April. My wife Nicole did not see Mr. Acavelo's dog outside, we've had a longstanding agreement that if one of us sees the other one's dog outside, we try not to let our dogs out. For this very reason, they just don't like each other. It worked pretty well, but humans make mistakes. Animals are animals, okay, so unfortunately, Mr. Acavelo's dog, when she let him out, Nicole hooked him to his lead, she was outside with him. She did not realize his dog was out, his dog barks, 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 lunged as usual from his lead in Mr. Acavelo's yard. And Nicole was there. Okay, Gordy ran at Mr. Acavelo's dog, when Gordy hit the end of his lead, it snapped, flipped him out of his collar, he hit the ground. The fence had been blown down by the storm. Okay? Uh, blown a windstorm and we had already called Praticos the second we knew it was broken to repair the fence, they had not yet been able to fix it. We called them immediately upon it being damaged, but it was busy as it was springtime and it was a very busy season for them cleaning up yards and doing outside work. During this incident, Nicole was able to get a hold of Gordy before a physical interaction occurred, she was in space the entire time. Mr. Acavelo claims his dog was injured by Gordy in that particular interaction, I'm not sure as the dogs never physically touched each other. Perhaps his dog was injured while jumping and barking while Gordy ran at him. Very possible, this is the first interaction between the dogs since the installation of said fence. We have made countless efforts to avoid any any interactions between Gordy and Mr. Acavelo's dog, we have spent over $13,000 to train and protect our dogs. We regularly walk with Gordy on a lead and use him, use a number of training methods with him. He is never outside or off-lead and he has exercised multiple times a day. I feel at some point the behavior of Mr. Acavelo's dog should be addressed. In the sense of when our dog, from dog behavior, when our dog sees him barking and lunging, he feels like he needs to protect their property. And it's nothing wrong. I'm not, I don't wanna blame either dog, their dog behaviors, and we're working really, really hard to negate our dog's behavior. Okay, these two dogs don't like each other. Very clear. Our dog gets along and plays with many other dogs. Right?
So does mine.
Absolutely, so these two dogs just don't like each other and every single time there's been an interaction, and there have been interactions where his dog has come over into our yard. And I have messages between us and Mr. Acavelo, where we were talking about it, and we have offered to pay vet bills in the past and he didn't want them. And we have those
Absolutely true.
We have those messages, so I I feel like this is two dogs who don't like each other because they both have behaviors that antagonize each other. I don't feel like it's one dog. I feel like it's an unfortunate set of circumstances that both dogs do not care for each other. And I feel like we are doing a ton spending a lot of money, putting a lot of time, a lot of effort into trying to mitigate that. And it it is, it's frustrating to be here right now because in that mitigation, I feel like there's been lots of work on our side to change the situation. And yet here we are, being expected to keep being the only ones doing anything to change that. And and I don't feel like that's fair. I'm working really hard with my dog, we take a lot of effort to try and get him in a better space. Do I think he's a danger to humans? No, and I'm not even gonna read off of here. I don't think he's a danger to humans, he has never ever once in his entire life had a single negative interaction with a human being. Kids, one of the reasons we took him in from a foster care situation is cuz kids can jump on him, grab his ears, pull his tail, wrestle with him, throw their bodies on him, touch him while he's eating. He has no pose poses zero threat to human beings, and I would say a very small threat to any other animal with the exception of his dog. And I will admit that freely, they do not like each other. The letter from my from my uh, my board certified dog trainer says that. And she says that one of the biggest reasons is part of his breed, the Sherpa, is a guard dog of children in flocks. That's what they're designed for, so when a dog is across a small, unknown to dogs barrier of an invisible property line and he sees a friendly bark. I don't think his dog is vicious. He sees a friendly bark, he jumps, he's lunging at us. In the past, when we first moved in, our kids didn't know that their dog, that his dog was pretty jumpy and physical, they got scratched, they got knocked over. So our kids are antsy about being in front of his dog, those dogs feel it. We're worried about our dog and his dog getting in an altercation, his dog coming on ours, ours coming on his, we're amped up when the dogs are out there, those dogs feel that. They feel that. Right, this whole situation is custom animosity between us, those dogs feel that, they know what's up, that's how they roll.
So do you have things that you want us to?
I just have the message, I just have the messages between us showing that we have tried to mitigate at least some cost early on, uh, Mr. Acavelo hasn't messaged back to us in a while, so I think he was upset about what was happening, and so he just said, you know, I'm gonna back out. Fine, but we did offer to pay, we had a great interaction, and I also want those messages to show that there were times where his dog jumped out of his car and came over to our side of the property and attacked our dog, he apologized for that, like, it's not a one-sided thing.
Geez, I don't even remember that.
I I know, and that's, that's the, that's, yeah, so let me give you the copy of the messages and I'll give you the letter. Yeah, and I'll I'll give it, Don, I'll let you have it too, so so that you could see that some of your messages are from us to you and you to us.
I know, I have the same.
So this, the first page is a timeline, the second page is a copy of the messages back and forth, and the last page is from the board certified uh, behaviorists for dogs, so I got a packet for everybody, if you don't mind, I'll just hand them around.
Let me, let me first make sure that Mr. Acavelo has a chance to look it over. And do you
Make sure to bring enough to people can have some of it.
Okay, good, good idea. Um, and do you have any objection to including that as part of the evidence we consider?
No.
Why don't you flip through the rest of it before you?
Well, I'm not done reading it, I'm gonna read it all before I go giving you any permission to do anything.
Okay, I'll sit down and be quiet.
And I gotta apologize, I put Bamo here instead of Mr. Acavelo cuz that's his nickname, and so when I was typing and I didn't realize it wasn't the official uh documented uh hearings.
Uh, your name's your name's Bob.
Don.
Oh, Don, I'm sorry.
But his nickname is Bamo, so in here I wrote Bamo, I think he spends a bit of minutes on the lake.
So now I'm confused, but your dog's name is
Bobby.
Okay. I'm really confused, but that's all right, it's it's better than Gordy Howe, that's all I'm gonna say.
It is memorable.
Yeah, I know. Now, you don't have to agree to everything in there and you'll have a chance to say, but right now the question is, do you have any objection if we look at that information?
If it's not correct and you're using it as the gospel, I don't know if it
No, the if it's not correct, you have a chance to raise questions about it, but we will have it in front of us to consider, and then we can give it the weight we feel it deserves.
Okay.
The fence is back up?
Yeah, it's great, and actually they, when they did it, they tightened it up and got it even closer to the ground cuz there was one spot on it that had he jumped, he might have been able to kinda rot under, and we actually had them tighten that up closer to the ground when they repaired it. And we moved it back, it was it was on our line, but it was about two inches, we moved it back so it was four inches from the line just to give a little more breathing room on his Two inches. We moved it back so it was four inches from the line just to give a little more breathing room on his side of the property. So. We tightened it to the ground and actually made it tighter and. The backside, it actually goes back and along Mrs. Natali's line behind us, there's an entire fence that I actually repaired for Mrs. Natali. That, um, is not on our side, but it's, she did, she's an elderly lady and I. Feel bad that her fence is broken, so I just repaired it for her anyway and it benefited us by giving us one more end of barrier for the animals.
Okay. Okay, I have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you. So go ahead and I think you've brought one for. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything more that you want?
Don't.
Wants to consider?
No, um. No, I, I. I just, like I said, I, I felt like it, I don't feel like it's a singular issue. I think the most recent issue has been our dog. With his, um, but I think i- if we look at in totality between the two animals, there has been a back and forth animosity. That has gone on that is both dogs antagonizing each other. And. I, I felt like we were being misrepresented in the original statement and that there was no responsibility. Placed on any party other than ours and I don't feel like that's right. And I don't feel like, I feel like there were a lot of assertions in Mr. Acavella's. Letter that he gave you that were without, without merit, without evidence. And I wanted to make sure that we cleared that, that the fence, we were trying to get it fixed. Right? And asserting that the, uh, we were coached by the law enforcement of our community. I think was without any sort of evidence or merit and I I didn't like that. I felt like it was disingenuous to say about me. And my wife. Um, and I. I feel like we have put thirteen thousand dollars into trying to mitigate the circumstance and we were being painted. As a picture of people who weren't doing anything and who were not taking any responsibility. And I didn't like that.
I didn't, okay, I can understand that, but that's not the way Mr. Acavella presented originally.
That's fine, but the, the letter was a lot of things that weren't necessarily true and I I didn't like that about it and it was pretty upsetting. Um. And so I've, I've tempered myself since, but I was, I was pretty upset by some of the things that weren't true. Things are true. I don't mind. I really have worked hard in the last especially year and a half to own my stuff. So was she. And I feel like there were some things in there that weren't us and it was a misrepresentation of what was really happening.
Okay, so Mr. Acavella, do you have questions?
Oh, I got questions.
Okay, well, you've got also the document in front of you, so you might want to ask from there.
Let me ask you this. When the, did you know that the fence blew over?
Well, yeah, it is. The fence blew over.
You, you did? Well, why did you let the dog out after that? If there's no fence there, when that dog.
It was on a lead.
And every single time he's bit my dog, he's run to the end of that lead and gone right out of his collar. What did you do to? To correct that, that him coming out of his collar? Did you ever change his collar?
That's not true.
Well, it most certainly is true.
The first, the first time, the first time he went over and he and your dog had an interaction, it was because my young children. Had gone in the house and didn't shut the door tightly behind them and it had nothing to do with the lead.
Okay, that's one. What about the other?
The other three were all on his lead.
Right, and then. On his lead. The issue with that was she was out there with him. She didn't know that Bobby was out there. The deal that we had at that point was that we wouldn't let the other one out if one was out there. So she was under the assumption Bobby was not out there. So the fence, the lead, none of it really would have mattered had Bobby not been out there. We did not know that. So as soon as she, as soon as she knew.
Let her finish and we'll get back to you.
As soon as she knew that, she immediately went to there and that dog never touched him.
Well, I can prove to you from the vet that he did touch him.
All, all you said was it was bruised and it could have been a break, but it wasn't and he had a. He could have gotten that running up the stairs. He could have gotten that. I wasn't there when they interacted. She was and they never touched each other.
What? Did you ha- I I guess I'm curious. Did you have an agreement that only one dog would be out at a?
They would put their light on when their dog was out.
Okay.
So I would come upstairs at night and I would look if their light was on, I wouldn't let Bobby out.
Okay.
And they did the same thing.
Okay. And did that work? Okay?
It worked okay until. It was daytime.
Yeah.
None of these bites occurred at night.
Okay.
But we would look out and see if he was there and at that particular time, we couldn't see that Nicole couldn't see that he was down. And because the fence was down, she was standing outside in the grass with him. She heard Bobby bark.
Yeah.
Right? And his chain from in lunging on the bark and she went, oh, pardon my language, oh shit. And she went running after him. Right? Because the fence was down. It was an extra precaution because of the fence.
I don't get that. What do you mean? Extra precaution?
She was out there with him.
It doesn't matter. He came on to my property.
You just asked. Was different. I just told you.
He slid out of his collar, correct?
Correct.
So.
The same thing that's happened four times. He slipped three times. He slid out of his collar. And you never changed his collar.
How did he get out of the collar?
When he hits the end, it like.
He like.
Right, it jerks, right? And like kind of chokes him for a second and then he drops out of, drops out of the collar.
Could you put him in? A harness or something?
Exactly what I wanted to know.
Cut out.
Would that work?
Our extra precaution because of the fence was that she was out there with him.
Yeah, well, that, that particular time it didn't work so well.
Correct. Now the fence is also fixed.
Yeah.
Um, and so. While the fence was up, there was never an issue. So the fence is now back up. It was fixed. I can't control Pradicos. Nobody can control Skipper. So that, that being the case, I, I can't. I, I can't speak to the speed at which Pradicos was able to get there and fix it, but.
No, but you can't let your dog out.
The fence is currently fixed.
The fence is fixed. Okay, so what's your solution?
I would have no problem getting a, a separate harness for it. What we've been doing since this is. Taking more time to go out and actually walk him. So he's on a, a lead with a collar that was a, is a gripping choke collar. You can't use those on the outside leads because it. It's a tightening collar, so if he would hit the end of it, he would injure himself and I wouldn't do that to an animal. So I think that. That getting a, like a four point harness that goes around the arms, probably very doable. Um. You know, we were on, we felt that with her outside with him while he was outside, that would have been enough. So it wasn't like we were just going, well, fence is down. Screw it. Go ahead, buddy. Like, we were doing something more than we normally would do, which was hook him up and watch from the window.
Okay.
So, so we weren't just. I want to make sure that it's understood that it wasn't this like, oh, we're just letting the dog go. Like, we were taking extra steps. We have been. Doing all sorts of things to try to mitigate any further action between the two dogs, including. The fence is also for his dog not to be seen by our dog so that we're not having to deal with him barking and, and. Antagonizing our dog and really, you know, making people uncomfortable.
Mr. Acavella, um, any more questions or? Anything else that you want to say?
I, I really have take offense that you said not all that stuff was true in the letter. I mean, I didn't say that. I said things were omitted.
You want to make it sound like your dog is innocent in this. Three times that dog slipped his collar and what did you tell me? He won't do it again. You said that to me three different times that he wouldn't do it again and you never changed anything as far as his collar is concerned. He's got the same collar now as he had the first time he slipped it.
We built an eight thousand dollar fence between our homes and got him five.
Underneath it.
Not, not anymore.
Wasn't it that much room underneath?
And it was like that. Did he ever get under there?
That doesn't.
No.
Okay.
No, he didn't, but that, he didn't get off his leash then.
So.
I'm gonna ask select board members if you have any questions of Mr. Moran.
Uh, oh, yeah. Well, I guess either, either of you could probably answer this question, but we do have a picture of the fence. Is this?
It's what it looked like when it was broken.
When it was broken, which is before they tightened the bottom?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Down this way, it's much, much closer further off the ground.
It's, it's tight to the ground all the way down now from when they fixed it.
Well, and okay, and none of the portion of the picture can I see is the side script.
Or it is, or it was.
It was, it was below the knee. It was, it was about this high probably.
Yeah.
In one particular spot, which they have now tightened right down to below the ankle.
And there's no gate. Stopping him from coming around that fence.
Yeah, it's not an enclosed area.
That's why we still keep him on a lead and we'll put that four point harness on if that's what.
Okay, so you. Then with the, the harness, a four point harness on that the dog can't slip.
Not agree with it. Not unless you're gonna put a gate across that open portion.
So you don't think that's gonna work?
Well, if he gets off his leash, which he may not now because the fence does, as TJ said, provide a certain amount of. They can't see each other, so they don't really, my dog's not jumping and carrying on. But if he gets off his lead, he's just gonna come around the fence.
Right, but if he's on a, in a four point harness, he's not gonna be able to slip it.
But also like to say, one of the times that he did break his lead, the lead actually, um. Broke out of the house. I just screwed it into the side of the house.
Yeah.
And what I then did after that was I got a much longer lag bolt, eye bolt. And put a two by four and went through the two by four into one of the stud beams of the house and the inside. So it, so one of the times, actually. It was not he slipped his lead. It was that he, um, the, the line broke because I didn't put it in strong enough and it was, that, that was fixed also, so.
Okay.
I mean, my dog's on a nine thousand pound. Tensile rope. Run. So he never breaks it.
Okay. All right. Um, Kurt, questions?
How far is it from the fence to the garage, you said?
Um, probably from here to that wall.
Well, I guess the easiest thing would be to work on a four point harness and maybe.
And when we can afford to, I would love to have a gate there. Really negate a lot of this, but I, I don't have that kind of money.
Just work, maybe work towards the gate in the future, you know?
Yeah, I would have no problem with it. It's not, it's not for lack of want.
Yeah, I'm not gonna force you to go.
But spending four, five grand, right, that's a lot.
Okay, um.
After already being a hole thirteen.
Any, Matt, anything else that you want to ask about?
Uh, I just, I guess I want to clarify, um. PJ mentioned earlier. Uh, an incident where Mr. Acavella's dog. Jumped out of a car and I think that's discussed here. It looks like in these messages. Was there a separate incident? Of Mr. Acavella's dog. Coming onto your property?
Can't remember if there was one other time, but.
You're referring to.
Yeah, so there was, there was definitely, uh, that time. I can't remember if it was that or. I know he had gotten off his lead a couple of times early on when we were there and I had. Helped Mr. Acavella actually wrangle him back because he was, he's just a dog that wants to jump. It's not like an aggressive thing. He just. And so he had knocked over a couple of kids and scratched some kids in our yard and I kind of rounded them up and helped Mr. Acavella bring him back. Because I didn't have exact dates because I really didn't care. It's a dog just being a dog. Um, I didn't. Put it in there because I couldn't give you exact dates and I felt like that would be unfair to, to put in there. But being asked about it, there were other instances early on where his dog had come over and that's where I think the. The fact that it's both dogs. Having these interactions, it's not a singular.
Yeah, but it's up to the adults, I feel, to, to make sure that they're not having interaction. It's not, dogs are not running our lives. It's, we're running their lives.
Correct. And so I feel like we've, we've done a significant amount to try and mitigate that and it hasn't always worked, but. Like I said, when the fence has been up, there were no. Interactions between those dogs. I can't control the weather and I can't control practicals landscaping.
Alright, so any final comments? What, what we're going to do now is we have. Um, we're, we're not gonna make a decision right now. Okay, we're gonna, we have a chance to deliberate and then do some, we have to draft an order. And make sure everybody on the select board is fine with it and then send it out. So. You're willing to do the four point hedge? Um, and the, the fence is back up and it's closer to the ground. What is it at this point, Mr. Acavella, that you would request?
The gate.
You want a gate?
Or just fence it off.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be a gate.
Okay.
So. Again, to clarify, this distance was how far?
Uh, from here to there.
And if, if that's constructed, there's, as you pointed out. The beginning, the, the yard is still not enclosed. This is still a fence that.
But he'd have to go all the way around the house. Would he do that? I don't know.
I mean, if somebody wanted.
When you say around the house, maybe I'm not, maybe I don't understand.
That's what the price of being a whole, a, a dog owner is, TJ. You have, even if you can't. You can't stand there and say, I can't afford this and still have the dog.
Uh, let, let Matt finish here. Okay.
I wonder if one of you would be willing to very quickly. Draw a diagram on that board that explains where your houses and the fence are, because I don't understand the comment that the dog would have to go around the house.
House. Pool. Fence. Fence. It's Dr. Acavella's house. Deck.
So the road is on our left running up.
Yeah. So the road. Kind of drive is here.
Yeah.
Driveway there.
Okay.
Show them where the fence is there.
Fence is right here.
Okay.
Where's? Well, that's a long ways away.
Where, where's?
That's the proportion. You better draw that.
I, I'm not an architect, so the inches to feet, I'd probably opt by a little bit.
So where is the gap in the fence that we're talking about?
Would be this space here, but then there's still a gap here and there's still a gap here.
Uh.
And if we're gonna be fair, this pool is probably here and this gap is probably bigger there and this space is probably here, but then it's open on the deck. So that needs to be done.
Oh, so when you say the dog would have to go around the house. But what about behind?
Can't go behind because that's a fence.
Right.
Where?
This is a fence.
That's the name, the other name.
The other neighbor's fence.
So you've got both.
It's the fence I repaired for Mrs. Nate.
Oh, so it's her fence.
Could you dotted line in where Mr. Acavella says there should be?
Going across, fence to the garage.
Okay.
The garage, there's a side door on the garage here. We'll walk way around it.
Okay.
Dragway goes out like this.
And the dog is hitched.
There's a tree. The only tree on the property is here and it runs from our deck stairs are like this. It runs from here. I'll do a squiggly line for that.
Okay.
To that tree and then he's on a lead that he can run down, poop, pee, scratch the dirt. Um, Bobby's line goes kind of like this on Mr. Acavella's, because that's where he has a metal.
He can't reach the fence.
So.
Okay.
Have.
He's maybe five feet from the fence.
What happens is his deck is here, his dog comes out, what, what would happen is. My dog go. And then they do this. So now we have the fence set up. So now there's no more. There's just two dogs on either side of the fence. Hopefully we time it and we pay attention to each other to make sure. That, uh, those two dogs don't interact.
Okay.
See, I let mine out once when his result. And I immediately, when he started acting up, grabbed him and dragged him in and I said to TJ, I didn't know your dog was all like. I look at his line, but sometimes if the dog's not moving, the lines. The, the run is pretty steady.
It looks to me like you've done a lot of cooperating back and forth on this whole dog schedule and one dog. In while the other dog's out and your, the tone of the emails is, you know, really pretty decent. So. I hope you can go back. Sounds like you were really good neighbors before some of. I hope you can go back. Sounds like you were really good neighbors before some of this came up, so I hope you can go back to that. Um, and so I think we're gonna, I think we've heard what we needed to. We've got the evidence in. Thank you for the diagram and that's roughly, you agree roughly, that's.
Yeah, that looks like it. So I can't do those inches to feet. That's not math, guys.
I understand the situation much better than that.
That was very helpful. You wanna gate, you're, you want a four point harness, so.
Or if I hit Powerball, I'll gate the whole thing out.
Okay, alright, well, um, so we've um, taken the testimony. Any other last questions from select board? Okay, thank you both very much for coming in and I. It was impressed the way you folks were working through things here, so I hope you can go back to that and we will issue an order. Um, when we have a chance to deliberate, so thank you folks very much for coming in.
Thanks for your time.
Welcome to stay the rest of the meeting while we're gonna have.
Can't imagine how exciting that might be.
It's real exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Bill.
Yeah, it's gonna be reflected in the minutes.
I'm gonna put this in the green folder. This is, these are the two exhibits, so everybody has, okay. So we've got town attorney on and we, it is uh. Somewhat after seven thirty. Um, and we've got a few things still to go with Bill, but um, we've gotta open the bids. For the town owned parcel of land for sale, but let's take our attorney if we could, please.
Well, are we gonna have some, are we gonna have something to talk to the attorney when we open the bids or? I was just thinking.
Uh, that was not on my list, but if you wanna do it in that order, that's okay.
Well, I didn't know if opening the bids might have. You know, there may be a question that we then have to talk to him about.
Right, we, I presume we have to open those and open.
Yeah, we have to open the bids in open session, so.
Yeah.
A point well taken. Why don't I do that right now? Okay, this is for the. Sale of town property two point, twenty nine point zero acres. Um, this is located off US Route seven on the. Uh, toward the east and it's behind another parcel of land. We've received two bids. They're both. Sealed, so. Opening the first. And this bid is from Mark Foley of P and R Properties. And he is bidding. Fifty five thousand, five hundred fifty five dollars and fifty five cents. Okay, bet he had fun with that. And the second. Oh. Is from. Uh, it says Tenny Brook Farm, sixty seven Travers Place. Uh, John Ruggero. And the offer is twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. What is your pleasure?
That's it.
That's it. Twelve thousand, five hundred from John Ruggero. Uh, DBA, looks like Tenny Brook Farm and fifty five thousand, five hundred fifty five dollars and fifty five cents. From Mark Foley, P and R Properties. Do you wanna take any action tonight or do we wanna bring in the other two select board members?
We should probably just receive the bids and.
Okay.
Go over at the next meeting.
Okay. So why don't we do that? And we've received the bids and we've opened them and. If Bill could make copies for next week's packet.
Right in the green folder.
Put them right in the green folder. Yes, you have to be careful of me taking things home. Um, and now we have several items that we wish to discuss with our town attorney um, involving. Pending litigation, possible litigation and. Uh, hmm. Oh, um, contract and advice on a contract, so. Is there a motion?
Several.
Motion to go into executive session for those purposes and to consult with our attorney. This motion's made and seconded. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Alright, aye.
Aye, motion carries and we're in executive session. We do want Chief Dumas to stay. And. It is one minute to nine. We're back on the record. We're out of executive session. Let's continue where we left off, which is Bill Sweet Town Administrator.
You're on there multiple times now. Running yourself.
You're recording, right?
Yes, we are.
Already.
Alright, uh.
I have a few things. Not, not too bad. I won't take up too much time. Uh. So on your desks, you have a sewer allocation request. Uh, this comes from. Joseph Rizzi, twenty four McKinley Avenue, which is also Mr. Twitter's. They would like to just continue using their septic and connect to the sewer line that runs in their front yard.
That place has a septic?
It, it doesn't, it's not connected to the sewer, so unless it goes in the river.
Probably pretty accurate cuz there's not a whole lot of real estate there.
Really good for watering those plants out, man.
Yeah, they have, uh, they, they've thought about uh, adding an apartment. To that, so this will be one step in that, in that process.
Ah, okay.
Down the road, but they would like to start this first.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the Joseph Rizzi Sewer Allocation Application. Is there a second?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Discussion.
Uh, alright, so can you just explain a little bit more of what's going on? This is a town sewer line that runs. We own a portion of the daily. Uh, wastewater processing capacity of the city sewage system.
Okay.
Uh. We have uh, a certain number of gallons of allocation that we can send down there and we helped finance part of that building and in turn we got. An allocation in which we sell to people that want to connect to it. Uh, so the cost is five dollars. Uh, per gallon. Uh, so it depends on what they are. I have a very large spreadsheet which has them all on there and I can show it to you if you like. Um, but we, we, we keep track of all of them and once a year I go through and I make sure everybody's within their allocation ranges. Um. But we are, but we had to keep track of them because we can only send some, we, we do have a limit. We're not really close to it yet, but we do have a limit.
We're not close to it.
We're not close to it. We're like two hundred thousand gallons away still, so.
A day.
A day, yeah. We got a ways to go.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of the sewer allocation, please say aye.
Alright.
Aye, motion carries. Um, I don't have to sign it.
Nope, nothing to sign, just, that's, that's it. Okay. Uh, the. Clarendon uh, admin reached out to me. Uh, they have had a resident come to their select board asking them for help. With Quarterline Road, I said. Uh, so they have asked, um, if we can bring that up and I said, yep, and we'll still probably go to our highway committee and then they can talk about it there, but we have had it. We have now had an official request from Clarendon to have a conversation about Quarterline Road.
Is it perchance the same person who was bugging us?
She wasn't sure because this person went to a select board member and the select member went to her, so we, we don't know or she, she wasn't sure at that point, but um. We had a little discussion about it, so yeah, it's.
So, okay, why don't we send it to highway?
That's, that's all we need, so.
No problem. You're welcome.
I already talked, I talked to Dave this morning about it, so yeah, it's good. Uh, the July fourth select board meeting, what would you like to do?
Oh, yeah. No, obviously we don't wanna meet the night before cuz that would be July third, which is even worse, so.
Why don't we meet?
Sunday, under the fireworks.
Oh, the, yeah. Bring the orders up.
Yeah.
Sign them. So do we? If we do the fifth, does that screw paychecks up?
They, that, that can be done. Well. That's a little strange because it's the beginning of the fiscal year too, so it's a little different, but it's. The only thing we could really do is maybe we could actually meet the week before and just. Have a one week, one week meeting and then.
Pre-year proof.
Window, but. Does make things a little interesting, but.
Meet on the twenty seventh.
Just.
Which was your idea from about?
Pushed the twenty until the twenty seventh and then skip one.
It's hard to, can't really skip them because, yeah, I mean, we can push it one, we could push it a week, but we can't really skip the meeting, so.
Um.
Could we all just come in, sign orders on the fifth? Or sign them on the, is. Town hall's gonna be open Monday. We just all come in, sign the orders on Monday and.
It's gonna be open Monday?
Yeah.
It's closed, it'll be closed on Tuesday.
But people will be taking long weekends, I would guess.
Well, the fourth isn't that important.
It's a holiday. Um.
If you want, if you wanna give us the day off, you can certainly do that. We won't.
We did.
We won't, uh.
The third, no, we didn't.
Right.
Do you wanna have a meeting on July third?
That's kinda gross.
Yeah. Do we wanna have a meeting on July fifth?
Do we need to meet? I mean, all we have to do is sign orders, right?
Well, yeah, but we, I mean, technically we're supposed to be. Voting each meeting to approve the orders before we sign them. We never do that. Um, which.
Well, why start now?
I know. Um. And so we really should have some kind of a meeting that week.
You could, it could make it an abbreviated meeting. You don't have to make it. We could, we could. Well, plus, you know, unless there's any emergent agenda items, we could leave them for the next meeting. That's, that's not a, that's not a big deal.
Yeah.
So we could make it a short meeting.
But we'd still have to get people paid, so.
Yes.
July fifth.
People appreciate that.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, I guess.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not.
Try and get over that. I really don't wanna do this.
Well, we could, well, we can plan for that and then we have another meeting to talk about it if that doesn't work, so.
There's no dot on the calendar that day, so that's a good sign.
But.
There is now.
Alright, let's aim for.
Okay.
July fifth.
At six?
At six.
Okay. Okay.
Not put much on the agenda.
No.
No, that's fine. That's, that's.
Let department heads know unless it's urgent, we don't.
Yeah, just, which is like we did at the school. That was fine. That worked, that worked out fine, so. Um, there are some old chairs downstairs. Are we okay to get, to offer those for anybody that would like them?
Give them away. Those are horrible. We got them for like fifty cents each.
Well, they were, the way, and they were in here.
Yeah.
At one point, uh, and there's, and there's some old folding tables too that don't really are.
The heavy, heavy ones?
Yes. Do we wanna hang on to those? We have, we have, we probably have.
Those rotary bars.
With what?
Those, are those the ones that rotary borrowed back in the day?
Think they did.
Yeah, we have like some six foot ones and some eight foot ones, but we give away some of the six foot ones. Just we have, we have, we, we have a, we have, we have six or eight in the hallway here. We have a cart fold downstairs and more, so we have, we have more than this building can hold.
Tables or chairs?
Tables.
My little starter of events.
The departments first and make sure, you know, if highway wants one or two up there or if rec wants them.
Sure.
And then I'd say just get.
Just offer them, okay.
Yeah.
And we still have the window?
Oh, for Christmas sake, we do.
So, I don't know, I don't know if we wanna.
How do we do the timber sale? We put a notice somewhere.
Yeah, we've offered, we've been out there a few times and gotten. Very little interest.
So we just say for sale.
Okay.
Dimensions of the window.
Okay.
And then, is that okay with folks?
Yeah.
Cuz Joey, Joey was.
He's interested in it. Gonzo was interested in it at one point, so I, I, you know, it, it just is there.
It's a historic window.
No.
Oh, God, no.
It was.
Oh, no.
It was some.
It was a misorder and it was a special order and it was not refundable, so.
It was a not smart order. It wasn't misordered.
Two hundred bucks.
It, it was what he ordered, but.
There was some, there were some unfortunate choices made. Um, okay, uh, website updates. We're coming into the new year, so we're gonna have a little money to work on the website. I have given uh, image setters a very extensive list of, of updates I wanna do to it, so.
I hate our website.
My, yeah, I mean, it's so.
Have you ever tried other towns websites?
There are some that are great.
I mean, we are ahead of some.
About, about four years ago, we, we, we really got into wanting to update it and we went out to some vendors that were great, but they were between fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, like it was. So we, we found image setters, I, I think Byron's one that suggested to and they've been wonderful, but we, we only, we do little things a little of the time, so. But we, we've got some, we, we need, there's some things we need to kinda take a step back and, and like. Get rid of stuff and, and so I've, I've given the list, like here's what I really want it to look like and, and so they're putting together a plan, so we're, we're working on that, so.
I want a searchable. I want a box that searches and really.
There is a box. Well, yeah, it's, it's only as good as it, it, it does work. It's, it's.
Yeah.
We, we can't get fifteen thousand dollar performers out of a five hundred dollar budget, so. We can, we're gonna, but, but if, if, if there are things that you want to include or, you know, anything, just let me know, we can, we can work it in, but we, I'm really. Like we have department heads in like two or three different places and like the official, like that's, we're just gonna, that's gonna go, like.
Recent stuff needs to be front and center on our, well, maybe not center, but a sidebar or something on our website, so everything. That is new, scholarship applications and not hopping around to.
Yeah.
Under different part. There needs to be a current. Something.
So that, that's kind of in, in where we post things like agendas, there, there actually is like a running thing, but it's, yeah, it's. It gets me one of those things where we're trying to mold what we have into what we want and we, it's really hard to do that rather than just doing like. Something completely different and starting all over again, so, so we'll, we'll keep working on it and I, I think we're gonna, I think. The, I, I wanna see what they come up with for a plan, then we'll, we'll, we'll go from there. Um. We were not successful with, we, we applied for that AARP grant for the Rapid Flash Beacons. We were, we did not make that, so that was too bad, so.
Bill, can you kill the volume on that or?
Yeah, I can, I can.
I'm losing my morals here.
I gotta watch in case anybody tries to join the meeting, but. Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, I'm hearing him twice.
Um, cuz somebody joins, I can't let them in if I'm all, well, yeah.
Joining at this hour.
The uh, the gateway signs coming into town.
Yeah.
Uh, are almost done. I've, I've, I've been there a couple of times. I've, I've been to Awesome Graphics a couple of times and. I've had some people call and say, hey, you know your signs. I'm like, yes, we know the signs are, are rough shape, so uh, they're almost on. I was there. Yesterday and they said they got us some final painting they gotta do on it and they'll be ready to go, so uh, we're getting there and I did. Talked to a landowner on the south end of town and he wants to see what it looks like and then he'll probably let us put it there, so.
Okay.
So, we, cuz we don't have one down there yet.
Yeah.
That's, that's only, we, we don't have one on the south end.
Alright.
So. Uh. The permit tracking ordinance, the updated one is now in effect. It, it's sixty day uh, window was up last week, so that's now in effect. Um, that one, then it's all online and posted. Uh, the short term rental ordinance, so I ma, I made a couple um, notes that were going along. The meeting where they had the hearing is on, we have, it's on our YouTube channel, so if you go on to YouTube and find us, you can watch the first part of the meeting. It was. About almost two hours probably of, of, of that. It was, it was a good conversation and. There, there, there were some people that were getting upset about water usage and I'm, I'm, I was trying to tell Barbara, like, we don't, we're not talking about that. Nothing, nothing here talks about it, so. If you're upset, that's fine, but like, we don't, we don't have anything that regulates that, so don't, please don't be upset at us about it. Um. Uh. The uh, mentioned the water usage. The, interestingly, the, the house in Santa Rutland, where we, we actually have, where we actually build the usage. Is one of the highest uses of all the houses around, so um, and not by a little margin. It's, it's a pretty big, al- almost double the next closest one to them, so. Um, it, I mean, it is legitimately a bigger house, but, but it is, it is absolutely of more substantial usage than, than other ones around.
Airbnb.
Yeah, you're short term rental, yeah. Um. So we, we talked about the adopt, the adoption process. The other thing that we had, we had uh, changed in there. Was to make it if, when, when you adopt it and if, or if and when you adopt it, to make it effective. July first of next year to allow people time to get inspections done by fire safety, cuz. In talking with, I've talked with Matt and talked with DJ and they said they absolutely want to inspect them uh, one time, like and, and that's, and that's, and that's enough, uh, unless we request especially. Uh, but to, in order to give people enough time, let's give them a year to, to do that. Uh, but in order to give people enough time, let's give them a year to to do that. So wouldn't, we wouldn't potentially make it effective till till July first next year. So that that date is is in here also. Um, Kevin's comments were great. We took actually a bunch of stuff out and it was, it was really good. So um.
Yeah, he did ask if. They they had been adopted.
Mm hmm.
So why don't you, if you would shoot him this final draft, he doesn't need to re-review it unless something is a glaring problem.
No, I I don't, I don't think so. I mean, he, we've, we we fixed some statutory issues and actually what's funny is the statutory problems were ones that were copied from other towns, but.
Yep.
It's okay. Um, we fixed ours. Uh, so you know, it's actually gotten a little smaller than than the last one, but I think, I think it it really does a good job and and I've talked to some residents after meetings and stuff and they've been, they they kind of changed their view on it after just just talking about what kind of what really what what was in it. So and a lot of what's not in it. So so I think it, I think it works out really well. Um. I think that is all I have. Uh, the Barbara talked about the audio in the room for the microphones. We were having a lot of trouble with that the last couple of meetings. The people in the audience wanting to participate.
Okay.
And if they don't come up, we can't hear them.
Okay.
We 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 had talked about, right? I I looked into that, a different microphone system for the room, which would. Completely eliminate that problem. So it would involve spending some money, but but we would, we would be able to fix that. So it doesn't matter where you're sitting in the room, you'd be picked up. So. We could address that. It just takes some, maybe in the next budget. Well, we can put some money in there to to do that. So. Other than that, that's uh.
Okay.
Is everything have?
Committee reports, we were, we've got the public safety building minutes and we discussed that a little bit with Kevin. So that's where we are with that. Um, building and technology.
Mm hmm.
Um, Kurt wasn't there. I didn't go to that one. Bill was there. The architect came in with plans.
Yep, we met, we met with the architect uh for a while and came with plans. We, they gave us a couple of different uh designs for downstairs, some layouts and like looks really good.
When do we get to see them, like the whole board?
Uh, we, well, we made a whole bunch of edits to to that. So to to, because there were things like where the floor has a a some dips here and there, like they had kept those in there. We're like, no, we're, if we're gonna do that, we're gonna level the floors. So I took those in and made notes. We're gonna level the floors part of that part of, so like uh. The the small meeting room in in the corner over there is in there. There's two bathrooms, the hallway over there, like we talked about. Um, secure storage space by the, by the vault, like it was all there. Yeah.
All right, I hesitate still on the secure storage space in that big. Open room with all of the. With A, open space and B, all of the. Light that's coming in the natural light. And I don't know why secure storage couldn't be put in the back part and free up that space for another more open. I'm just saying. I. I don't like that.
And when you see it, when you see the plans, it may, may make more sense.
I I will take a look.
Yeah, um, I did, like I said, and I did find the the lists we had from downstairs, people voting, actually right over there and it's, we had everything on it. So so we hit it all. Uh, but they had the kitchen moved over, taking the staircase out and moving that over. And yeah, it looks.
Good.
It's a really, really good plan. So yeah, I'm, we're looking forward to the next, the next revisions. I kept all the windows.
That sort of related one is this MERP.
Yeah.
Money.
Yeah.
Um, I I don't think we told the archer, maybe you did, but the, was the architect aware that we have some money to do the energy efficiency and whatever that is?
I haven't, I haven't talked about that yet.
Okay, so we should probably make sure. That that he knows that that's a resource we can have that may be reducing some of the costs down there. So.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is, and I mentioned this to Joey, but then I forgot to do anything. The monument outside, I mean, it's all part of the town project is Dr. What's his name?
I'd heard some, some people made contacts and like and come in and then they said they, yeah, they're gonna get some people together and come back and never heard anything anymore. So.
I should email him and say, hey, and we need some numbers from you. We need, we need a plan and we need some numbers from you folks when we start building the budget in.
Yep.
November.
I I did get um from West Rutland. They sent me their whole project list a couple of years ago, but but everything they did for that.
Nice.
Project. So I do have.
Okay.
That's those things. Um, and we did um. For the stone bench project, they asked for the letter of support. So we we created that. That's, that's good. So that they're moving forward with that. They've got their students. So that's, that's.
Good.
Underway. So.
Where are we putting the bench?
Probably up Northwood, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're still trying to figure it out.
All right.
The other thing was the uh, the appointments I'd given you the. The list.
We got anybody interested?
No, well, we 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 want, you want to see the the, want everybody to see the descriptions.
Yes.
If you're all good with with the way that's worded, that's what I will release out.
Yeah. Um, next time when you do one of these, don't highlight in blue because you cannot read the damn thing.
No.
No.
Huh? I can read it.
You're a whippersnapper. Some of us are older.
I'll, I'll use it. I'll use a, I'll use a gentler color.
Please. Nice job on the townwide celebration flyer. You have one on your desk. Bill got a whole bunch put together and up to the schools. So the. Parents will get them from their kids and will be aware that we're doing townwide celebration.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? I think we hit everything on our action needed. Other than annual appointments, but I've not heard that. Oh, I know. Town grand juror, there was a tie on write-in votes. Um, Matt Getty versus.
Isn't it Darren?
Darren. Yeah. So.
And I've been thinking I would have wrote in Darren's name. So nominate Darren.
So.
She can figure out what the heck that job is.
Darren to be town grand juror if she'd like.
Sure.
Okay. Should I do that? You want to, you want to talk to her? She's your neighbor, right?
She is.
Why don't you, why don't you talk to her? See if she wants to be town grand juror. I've heard she does.
Okay.
Gonna concede the race to her and.
Yeah, we can make it public even. There could be a dunking booth involved. I don't know.
It could be.
Okay.
It'd be.
All right. If there's nothing else.
What's your adjourned?
Motion's made.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
You bet.
Aye.